Okay, looks like we are on. So, I'd like to open the Georgetown Planning Board Wednesday, September 24th, 2014 meeting. First on the agenda, approval of minutes. And Howard, do you just want to comment on those?
Right, you have, we caught up to the minutes. The one thing that I requested the board is that the August 27th meetings were, minutes were sent to you separate. And they're still not complete, but they're sent to you for informational purposes. Because that meeting has some relevancy on board activity tonight. So, I just recommend to the board that they pass those minutes to the next meeting and approve the three, the changes to the screening, July 23rd, August 13th, and September 10th.
Mr. Chairman.
Sir?
I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes of July 23rd, August 13th, and September 10th of 2014.
Second?
With any corrections that may be necessary.
Okay, there's been a motion to approve the meeting minutes of July 23rd, August 13th, and September 10th. It's been seconded. Is there any discussion?
I have some corrections, Chairman. The first one, on page two.
Of July 23rd?
Yes. Fifty-two, instead of awning, it was by the selectmen. They authorized the awning on the...
All right, selectmen.
And then on fifty-four, it was to show burden of the facade. That's what we were addressing. And the fifty-six, the same thing, except the front facade on the roof elevation. And down on the 149, on page four, my comment was, if going to pack in eighty-seven seats, I suggested a valet parking at the park and ride. And that's it for that one.
Okay.
Yep, I got a few others. Twenty-seven, of 268.
Do you want August 13th meeting minutes?
I don't know. It just went on. This page is six of ten, has a public hearing.
Yes, you're still on July 23rd, yeah.
Okay.
What page?
On page seven, number 268. Mr. Demento, I think what was discussed, and I'm trying to remember it all, but the pastor had given Mr. Demento a verbal statement that he was approving what they had planned to do with the sidewalk. And then when it came down to getting something written, the parishioners decided that they didn't want to put the sidewalk, they wanted to save the trees. So, wherever you want to put that statement, in whatever way, that was the deciding factor, was that all along we had thought, and he did too, obviously, that it was an okay design. But when it got down to the writing, it wasn't.
They can revisit the DVD.
Okay.
I might suggest, Howard, on line 268 says, yes, previously they did, but now they are no longer.
That's, that could be...
Willing to give permission.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that clarifies it.
Willing to give permission.
Yeah, that's a good idea.
Clarifies it.
And down on number 291, I think the comment should be stated here that Mr. Graham's concerns was about flooding on the other's property, and on 133. I think that ought to be in our minutes somehow. And on page nine, rather, of number 373, just one word is omitted. Mr. Olson asked, how much did it cost the taxpayers? So, we just put in much. And 413, on page 10, just take out "it." There is a lot of different talk, and you have "it" in there, which could be removed. And then number 420. I wanted to find out the limits of the planning board and clarification of the bylaw. That's what I was looking for. Okay.
Get that out?
Yep. I think the next one was okay. Lots of reading. I think there was just one, or probably a number eighty-four, two of six at the last one.
You're on September 10th?
Yeah.
Eighty-four?
Yep, that was...
Page two of six, Mr. Hoover asked.
Yeah.
Gotcha.
You had that one too, "if it is."
I'm sorry, I'm lost.
If there is anything, instead of "is." Number eighty-four.
Not August 13th. Excellent, September.
It should have been "if" instead of "is."
Yeah.
Okay. That's it. Pretty good.
Yeah, good.
It's a lot of reading to do.
I'd just like to make a comment about the September 10th minutes.
Okay.
Excellent. But I keep on...
You'll have to read it.
It's a new age. New fun.
I thought they were phenomenal.
I think the only thing I...
Just right. Nice balance.
I think, I would concur with what Harry said. And I just wanted to ask a question, it's not a change, but, so this is page 10 of 10 of July 23rd. Yeah, and it's the second paragraph, oh, it's 405. So, it talks about how we talked about modifying the meeting minutes. Would like the board to adopt, question, did we ever formally adopt this new way as the meeting minutes are moving towards? Did we, was everybody on board with that?
Just discussed it, and I thought everybody agreed that we should do that.
I'd just like that, I'd like that to be clear in the record then.
Okay.
Okay?
As far as if a document isn't before us?
Just that, as the meeting minutes that you commented on have, are starting to change and just the right, and it's kind of a new meeting minute format.
Okay.
I just want the record to show that the board was in agreement, that we agreed to go in that direction. That's all. That's all. Okay, seeing no more discussion.
Could I just ask, in line 407, were you saying you'd like to avoid and minimize the information coming in prior to the meeting, or at the meeting?
Prior to the meeting.
Right, and prior to meeting being...
At the meeting.
No, less than four days or five days.
Oh, okay, all right, all right. Because in reading it, as it's written, it's like, why, the whole idea, just to get the information early.
But is that, is that clear?
I understand, as explained, yeah.
Well, I think we understand, maybe, maybe we should make it clearer in writing.
We'd like the board to adopt the position of, if not in the packet, then we cannot accept or discuss the meeting. That's pretty clear?
Got it.
Would like to avoid and minimize the information coming in prior to meeting. Let the applicant know, why don't you just strike that whole...
Maybe immediately prior, is what we're trying to say there.
Okay. In other words, we don't want to hand it something and then... What I, I guess what I'm, I guess what I'm suggesting is that nothing is, you know, nothing is 100%, so there are always exceptions to the rule. But for the vast majority of the time, if something is not handed in to Howard with enough time for him to get it in the packet, then the applicant A should be notified that it will not be brought up at the meeting, and that it can be included in the, as a supplemental package if he wants, but it's...
Oh, I get it, and I'm 100% behind it.
Yeah, that's a good way.
I think, if you put the word "immediately" between the word "in" and "prior,"
I think that does clarify.
I think for, so that someone five years from now, reading this, would know. Oh, that's what they want.
Yeah.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay, all right. Thanks, Bob. So, okay, so we'll take a vote then. All in favor of approving those meeting minutes previously mentioned?
Aye.
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 All opposed? No. However, I have to abstain from the August 13th, because I was not at that meeting. Okay.
Well, I don't think we're approving August 13th, right?
August 27th.
August 27th is the one we're skipping.
August 27th?
Yeah, we did the 23rd.
Twenty-third, 27th.
Oh, my mistake, yep.
All set?
Yeah.
Okay. Correspondents, want to touch on that? Anybody have any questions about the workshop schedule?
Mary Ellen and I are both plenty on attending one of the rooms. And I'd like Mary Ellen to know that Georgetown Planning Board would be happy to cover her fee. But I haven't heard from other planning board members, but you have a little bit of time, it's my understanding, that you can reserve your spot up to five days before the seminar. And the seminars, different dates, different locations, so...
These are all so far away, I would go in the springtime when they have it, I think they have them a lot closer. The good ones are way down in Cape Cod, I think.
There's only two in Havil.
Yeah, those are the...
One in Havil that I'd just bring to the attention of the board, and, you know, Bob, I don't know if you had a chance to take a look at it, but number six, roles and responsibilities of planning and zoning boards. You know, sometimes those are good for picking up some stuff that, wondering why we make our decisions the way we do.
It is, it is a good, I've been through all of Merrimack Valley planning ones. I wish they would come up with some new ones, you know, like these others. I mean, if they had some of these that are, they present the same ones every year, you know, and...
I agree with you, Tilly, I think it's good to have some, some stable ones for new members of the board, but for well-established board members then, to have new information.
I know. You have some good speakers listed here in this group.
They do.
Really? I wish they were closer, but I just don't feel like going down to Brockton at seven o'clock at night for...
Yeah, lots is a little bit tough to make.
Okay, the second item?
Correspondence, go from the page you can bring up during the A and R.
Okay, correct.
Mr. Chairman?
Sir?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the vouchers, grand total of $39.17.
Okay, there's been a motion made, and it's been seconded by Tilly, motion by Harry to approve the vouchers in the total amount of $39.17. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? unanimous. Okay. All right. Okay, A and Rs.
First A and R we have is a lot line adjustment for 48 and 50 Tenny Street, and there's surveyors here to briefly present.
Well, I'm not surveying.
Oh, you're the owner?
Owner of 50...
Oh, because you walked in and dropped it off, and it seems like you were, well, the owner is here to...
The owner is here.
To discuss.
I think they give us free rolling paper after five grand.
It's not good, it's too old, it's already on the machine.
So, so did, did someone representing the A and R want, wanted to come up and say anything?
Yeah, he's here.
Okay. For 48 and 50 Tenny Street. I was told that I was here to answer questions, but I'll, I'll do my best.
If you could just, for the record...
This all was precipitated by, I started looking at putting on a deck, and found out that my adverse attacks, and so I'd talked to Bob, my neighbor, for a number of years about adjusting the lot line, and he is, he agreed to it, and what you see is what we came up with.
It's pretty straightforward.
Pretty straightforward, I think.
It is straightforward, and I'll note that, to the board, that part of the Form A was owner's signatures, and so we have signatures of both Niles Hatch and Robert Page, so both property owners involved are aware of the A and R application.
I have to say, this is one of the best drawing plans I've seen in a while for an A and R.
Sorry?
Very well drawn plan.
I'll relay that to, to Donahoe Survey.
Mr. Donahoe, give the flag. Hit all the numbers. Rings all the bells. Sure, that's moving all right. Rings all the bells.
Howard, anything?
No, nothing from the planning office.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to, that board endorsed plan of land in Georgetown, Niles L. and Kathleen C. Hatch, and Robert C. Boylen H. Page, by Donahoe Survey, dated August 28th, 2014.
Second?
Okay, a motion has been made by Harry and seconded by Tilly to endorse the A and R plan of land in Georgetown, Mass., property of Niles L. and Kathleen C. Hatch, and Robert C. and Boylen H. Page, dated August 28th, 2014, prepared by Donahoe Survey Incorporated.
I'll note for the board that, as I mentioned at the last meeting, starting to utilize the Form Bs, the A and R plans and the MyRs here for your signature, those go to the registry of deeds. The Form B shows the endorsement of the board with your signatures, it's also stamped as received by the town clerk in those, in our file, so...
Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All opposed? unanimous, 4-0. All set?
Thank you very much.
Is there a MyR over there?
There's a MyR, it's the one on the top. If the board wants to take a few minutes now, or sign at the end, and you can pick it up tomorrow.
Can we sign at the end?
Yeah.
I'll pick that up tomorrow.
Yeah.
Nice, thank you very much.
All right, good night.
100, 102 Pond Street, Jamie Roberts is here. You recall this application, this A and R application was before the board recently, in the past few weeks, and the applicant withdrew because of some concerns from planning board members. I reached out to town council, and he received his email under correspondence to help the board understand how the concerns can be addressed with endorsement of the plan. And Jamie is here to answer some more questions, if the board has them.
If they have them.
I recommend, this is a complicated process, because it's a complicated subdivision that was done in the A and R. But the applicant withdrew, and he's refiled the same plan because of some clarifications that came up from town council. But I'm just recommending that the board consider waiving the A and R filing fee for this refiling.
Just for clarification, this is an A and R filing, you're not filing to modify the existing subdivision permit that you have.
Correct. It's an A and R.
So, that other lot is going to be left without appropriate frontage. Your neighbor.
Correct, who's here, who's present, neighbor, is going to be left with...
Without appropriate frontage.
Well, he would be left without appropriate frontage if this roadway never was, was not built until 2016, correct? So, he would have to go to the zoning board of appeals to get the variance, so...
Correct, and with his A and R combining that parcel, that roadway layout...
Right.
It does create the non-conforming on his. Justin, Jamie, and Jamie's wife and I met and went over their two options, option being refiling the A and R, and the second option being refiling a modification to the subdivision plan. And Jamie and Justin both understood what would occur with the A and R, and they proceeded to refile.
It's good to see you both here. Howard, Harry, do you want to continue with any more questions that you might have right now?
I, I just want to point out that this was a mistake that this planning board made. We never should have released a covenant on that lot, so that that lot could have been sold prior to subdivision roadway being built, at least to binder course. So, this board messed up and created this problem, and no one's going to have a bad thousand, but lesson learned. This was us, we're the ones with mud on our face.
I mean, I think the positive, if I could speak, I think the positive thing about it is, you know, Justin's willing to, you know, take care of the variance for his frontage, which will eliminate the easement, and also the, you know, the subdivision won't happen, which the Concom was, was overjoyed about, so...
Right, right.
Bob, did you have any questions?
One follow-up question to that. So, you'll be filing for a variance?
I'll have to, yeah.
With the, with the ZBA?
Yeah, at this point, yeah.
And Howard, maybe you can clarify this for me, I'm not fully up on variances, or Tilly, but isn't this, how does that qualify for a variance? How can the ZBA legally grant the variance?
That's up to them, though. I mean, that's up to them.
In my opinion, yeah, it is up to them, and in my opinion, you know, I felt the same, I feel the same way as what was stated. To me, the original variance does not go away, it stays there, you don't, it goes with the land, and, and I think that's what town council is indicating. Although he didn't, unless lawyers are, they don't specifically say it so bluntly as I am, but it, it goes with the land.
It goes with the land, and I believe that with the A and R, I think the concern being raised is, is an honest and legitimate one, but it's, it's considered zoning, and the A and R in the assistance can't consider zoning.
Right, that's right.
I did meet with, and he isn't here, and, but I did meet with the zoning code enforcement officer, and he understood the situation, and he thought that the ZBA would be willing to work with the previous variance that was issued, and the previous finding that was issued, and understand that this would be reinstatement or a new finding.
Or a clarification of the 2007?
Yeah.
A clarification, perhaps?
I think this is, this is truly the exception of the rule, because I can't see people being able to get a variance if they just, if they just don't have the frontage. You know, this is just an exceptional because of your situation.
Soils, typography.
But I have, I do have another question, but I will ask it after the A and R.
I think, Bob, you, you said you were all set?
Almost had.
Okay, so, Tilly?
My, my other question was, I thought, and this is probably just for the board, it's not about so much the A and R, but I thought we refunded money on a covenant or a bond to the, one of these subdivisions. And Mr. Green, didn't we do that like three or four months ago? And I was wondering, do we have a provision under subdivision regs that if there's a bond in somebody's name, and then they sell the subdivision, does it, does it get renamed, reprocessed? What is the steps?
Do, did, was there, Howard?
Can I, can I just clarify? When we did that, that would have been the review fee, the 53G fee, which is for review. And those monies are the monies of the applicant, the town is required to keep those monies in a separate account.
Yeah.
Escrowed.
Yeah.
And they actually gain interest for the applicant.
Well, what is the M account? Most of the money were...
That is it, that is one of the M accounts we have.
Right, right.
That is one of the M accounts.
Okay.
But if you're talking about the bond of surety, if, if there's a bond established, project sold, the bond is returned to the person that opened it, but it's requirement of the purchase, the purchaser of the development, that they establish the bond as well.
The unique part about the, I'm sorry, just following on that line, the unique part is that I do recall this board releasing the covenant on your lot, sir, and I'm just wondering at this point, these other lots, the ones that you now own, where's the covenant on them? The town should still have a lien on those.
Okay, that's, that's a legitimate question, but it's for another time.
Yeah.
What we have in front of us tonight is this A and R plan.
I'm afraid that weighs heavily on my decision to endorse or not endorse this A and R.
Well, okay, okay, it could be. So, Tilly, did you have anything else?
No.
So, just quick update, we've gone through everything up to the agenda where we're on the lot line adjustment for 102, 100 Pond Street. I don't know if you have anything you want to mention or say about that, otherwise I'll say my piece and ask my questions.
No, go ahead.
Okay.
Whatever, repeat what's already been said.
Okay. So, I guess, Howard, does the applicant have a copy of this email from John Eifman dated September 8?
Did you, were you forwarded a copy and email of it?
You probably gave it to my wife, I don't think it had my email address.
As he's getting that for you, I just want to read into the public record...
Joe?
Some of what was said. And this is item number one from town council. In my opinion, if the proposed perimeter plan is submitted again without change to the planning board for endorsement as an A and R under GL blah, 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 in my opinion, the planning board must endorse the plan. The plan does not show, and then it goes on. So, that's one, that's one, there were three items that, that the attorney had talked about. The other items, in terms of subdivision approval lapsing, not lapsing, he references and gives his opinion on that, but that is for another time, it's not for this agenda item for the approval of the A and R. Number three, where he talks about creating an unlawful lot, and this variance, and so on and so forth, again, that's a discussion for another time, they've rendered a very clear opinion, but that's not what's before us tonight with the A and R. And then the last item, number four, is about adequate security for construction, and I don't know, Howard, if you got any clarity from town council about what you're going to talk about.
It alludes to what Harry had mentioned before, that the, there should have been at the lot release, there should have been some surety that was, was made, so that road would be constructed.
Okay. So, those were the four points for the public record and for the public to hear, and brings us back to the first one, which is, we have an A and R plan in front of us, and now it's, now it's, the board's, up to the board to make a motion, and we can have discussion on the motion.
I'm making a motion to endorse the A and R. I'm making a motion to endorse the A and R for, well, this is one hundred.
You, you need to, you should note in your motion, Tilly, the document, the, the actual plan, it's up on the screen.
And the date.
And, and the date.
The date of the flip.
All right.
Howard, I have the current today's date on these drawings right here.
July twenty-fourth.
You have an updated...
Today's date, it's the same thing.
Today's date.
Yeah, you want that one.
Yeah. Here. This is larger font. The date's to today.
Just the date.
Yeah. That would've been over the twenty-one day.
The plan is dated September eighteenth, twenty fourteen, for...
The plan of land.
Where's the date, and where is that one hundred? Prepared by Edward J. Farrell, professional land surveyor. And any other dates, you use this date?
Use that date.
We need the date of the property now, it's not on here. Is it?
I would just read...
Lot A on Pond Street. It is one hundred?
I just wanna read the title of the drawing.
Plan of Land Pond Street.
So, we have a second?
Second.
Okay. There's been a motion by Kelly, it's been seconded by Bob to approve the plan of land Pond Street, Georgetown, Mass., dated September eighteenth, two thousand fourteen, prepared by Edward J. Farrell at a scale of one inch equals forty. Okay, discussion. Discussion.
I have a Form B for signature, so.
Okay. I guess the, I guess the only, the only discussion I'd, I'd like to, to, to point out is that this is, in my opinion, where the planning board is being given clear direction from its town council. In fact, it's one of the clearest pieces of direction I've seen from them in a long time.
Must endorse, yeah.
And the job, in my opinion, of the planning board is to enforce the ordinance as written, and if you don't like the ordinance, to change it. Because if you don't follow that protocol, what happens is you start introducing with all the best intent, everybody has the best intent of the town in mind, but you start introducing your own personal agendas, opinions, regardless of what's written. And that's when the town gets into trouble later on. That's when applicants do not understand, when they're coming before a board, what the rules of the game are, and it ends up coming back to bite everybody often. So, I wanted to share that in the light of, of this vote. So, any other discussion? Okay.
The only thing I might say is unusual circumstances may leave some people in the position where by, by endorsing this A and R, we, as a planning board, exacerbate the mistake that we've made earlier, and thereby make us more culpable in the long run. And keep in mind that the opinion that we're getting, that says we must endorse, is coming from the attorney that would be getting the billable hours if we were sued. And I'll, I'll leave it at that.
Does anybody else wanna say anything? I, I guess my only comment on that would be, I, I have a great deal of respect for, for that firm in, in many ways, and I'm not concerned in that regard about billable hours, one. Two, the fact that both of the applicants are sitting here, and the fact that they are both clearly aware of all of this that we've talked about, it seems to me that the planning board is, is doing, doing its job pretty good. So, if there's no more discussion, we'll take a vote, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
I'll abstain, since I wasn't...
Abstain?
I've let the, please let the record show out, and Mr. Lockett, Tilly, opposes.
So, we have three, four, Tilly, Rob, Bob.
Three, one, one.
Are you all set?
We're gonna sign the Form B, we'll sign the miles, just stop by tomorrow and...
And, and would like to, would someone on the board like to make a motion to waive the application fee?
I move, we, the planning board waived the application fee.
One second, ma'am.
So, it's been motioned and seconded to waive the application fee. Any discussion? No discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. I'll say aye for that one. Thank you.
Aye, unanimous.
Okay. If Tilly agrees with it, I...
Good luck.
All right.
Oh, he's all set. Y'all are all set.
Good luck.
Thanks.
Get that P done.
Yeah.
Okay. Next on the agenda is members or public reports, any concern of planning board members or members of the public with regards to anything that anyone has brought to the meeting tonight, the planning board?
I'd like more, just more explanation on what Harry was explaining about the covenant was released. I, you lost me there, Harry, and I'd like to know what...
Subdivision.
What number on the subdivision, so I could do some homework about it.
I don't remember the number, I'm sure Howard could look it up for you, you know, tomorrow or something like that, but the bottom line is that, like, like any other subdivision, as soon as it was approved, the, what was it, seven lots, seven lot subdivision? Those seven lots were covered by a covenant that the applicant agreed to with town, has a lien, so to speak, at the registry of deeds on each of those individual lots, and...
So, when you release that...
At some point, the applicant came in...
They don't have to do the road.
And asked for a release of the single lot that the, what's the gentleman in the back?
Justin, Miss Colemore.
Yeah, that, that one. That was granted by this board, that release was granted by this board.
And it shouldn't have, because the road wasn't done.
Not because the road was not done, it didn't have frontage.
All right, then, there's another issue that I've been driving by North Street on this road issue. North Street, where there's gonna be three lots, and one of the houses is almost complete, but the road is not. And I've been driving by it, and I don't see any action on it for...
Are you talking about Jefferson Court?
Yes.
That's never gonna be accepted by the town, that's the, that was the court that was approved through special permit. And for, for, it's only for two lots.
Right.
And so, the board never required a covenant, because there wasn't ever going to be a road to be constructed or built for the purpose of the town accepting.
Well, he's left it in sand, and, you know, it looks like sand, and he's got his, the one house almost done, it looks like from the outside anyway, and we didn't put a timeframe on when that road is gonna, whatever it's going to be.
Completely private road.
So, that could stay like that?
The road that we were referring to here earlier, Pondview Lane, Pondview...
Pondview Lane.
Lane, was, was intended to be a public, town-accepted roadway.
Right.
And that's what we make sure that it's just right, that's why you have to, because it has to be up to standards.
To leave it the way, and the condition it's been in.
Well, he can't leave it that way forever, because his approved site plan states that it's, it's gonna be asphalt paving.
Yeah, he won't get it up sick.
Move forward until that is done.
Oh, okay.
Cause the occupancy permit.
All right.
Sure he got a building permit, but...
Wouldn't have seen one.
He can't get it off.
Build anything you want, but having people move in there and being able to sell it's completely...
I just wondered, you know, it's, the weather's been so dry, which there hasn't been an issue, but if we have a downpour, there's gonna be sand and dirt going down North Street.
Maybe we'll see that tomorrow night.
Is that, are we getting something tomorrow night?
Yeah. Jury's not out on how much, but...
Okay.
I think the only item I just wanted to ask about was the status of the tree pits with the spot and the highway surveyor. Has there been any discussion about that coordination of that?
No.
Can you make sure that's on your thing, list of things to do, and you know me too well? Okay. Old business. Special permit, sixty East Main Street Athletic Facility, an extension of time. Howard?
Park and Rec Jim Demento has, has submitted a Form H for the board to approve, so that the board and the applicant have may have more time to complete the permit application. It's not gonna be much longer, they're, they're in final drawings, and the, the board approved the project. We're just waiting for the final set of drawings to show that it's conforming to all the conditions that the board set for.
What did Jimmy give us till?
He didn't, it's, he didn't give a circle, but it's December thirty-first.
End of the quarter? Mr. Chairman, I'll make a motion that we grant the extension of time, Form H for sixty East Main Street Athletic Facilities to December thirty-first, two thousand and twenty-two.
Okay, so, there's been a motion by Harry and seconded by Bob to approve the request by applicant for extension of time for East Main Street Recreation Project to December thirty-first. Is there any discussion?
So, they're gonna stop yelling at us?
The, the only discussion that I have is, time is money, and I'll be curious to see what the additional costs are to the town for that. But with that being said, all in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimous, all opposed. Okay. Site plan approval, one oh five East Main Street Stone Pantry, draft decision.
I wasn't in on this, Mr. Chairman, so I'm refusing.
All righty.
We're not in full of that.
How are you tonight?
Good, good, thank you.
At September tenth meeting of the planning board, they approved with conditions that site plan application for Stone Pantry. Donna's provided a mile or two the planning board for their signature, and it's a very straightforward, it's a one meeting with the planning board, so it's a straightforward site plan application. I can certainly take in comments, but I believe because it's a simple application with minimal comments, the board could approve with revisions to be made, for the board to sign. I can leave it at the police station, and the board can walk over and sign the decision, or it can wait for the revised one to be held present at the next meeting, so.
Okay. Was there anything you wanted to add to that?
No.
Okay. Tim, any questions, any?
No, to be honest, I haven't read it.
Okay. That's an honest response? I like it.
Busy.
Bob?
I have no comments, it looks good to me.
Okay.
Fine, great.
I, I do have some comments. In, in general, when I read this, the findings of facts in this decision, it's, it's written as if there's a lot of new construction taking place on site. And I know a lot of this is boilerplate information, but it's, it's confusing and misleading. For example, it talks about finding a fact, number one, it says, and associated site development improvements. It goes on and talks about...
Well, let's, before moving on, Rob, if there's something in finding a fact, number one, you want removed, then let's, let's do that.
Okay, well, there's so much in here that I think needs to be removed, that it's a general statement, if you want, I can... But what I'm saying is, I think this needs to be looked at again closely. And there's a lot of stuff in here that talks about site work that needs to be deleted. I, I can't help it, just...
I know you can't help it, but you and I had a conversation this afternoon, and you told me that.
I did.
No, you didn't, so...
I told, I, I did.
So, if there's things to be removed, you're asking me to rewrite this and present it at the next meeting? For the same discussion to happen, or can we remove things now?
If you want, I will try and remove things now, but that's not the most effi- efficient way to do it, but I will do that if that's what you want.
Yeah, I'm leaving it up to the board.
Well, let's start at the beginning, then, and go through. Let me ask you this, do you first agree that what I'm saying is a correct statement? That there's a lot of stuff in here that talks about site work, construction?
Yeah, there are things that can be removed regarding site construction.
The location of proposed improvements is within an existing building with intended use and associated site development improvements. Let's delete that whole sentence there. Keep proposed improvement is within an existing building with intended use. Properly located within the site, so delete and associated site development improvements. The applicant proposes a project that involves an interior buildout of eighteen hundred feet for the purpose of a retail use in the existing building and site improvements to an existing parking area. I would delete that.
Well, the, aren't you doing some restriping or things, or no signs, nothing for handicap parking in front of...
Um, if I, I didn't, if I need to, I will, I, I mean...
Okay.
It wasn't, you didn't present any new site work?
No, no, no.
Adjacent properties are protected from nuance, nuisances caused by noise, fumes, glare of lights, and distracting visual features. The glare of lights, my understanding is that it was not part of the original, the site plan that was approved, that there was, that a lighting plan was not part of what was approved.
You, for, for this application, correct?
For the, for the site plan, for that site plan that was submitted as part of this application, but the previous site plan which was approved, that lighting was not part of that.
But, well, it, it's, that, that's not relevant to this.
Well, it is, because what this is saying is...
What this is saying is regarding just this application.
Correct.
It's not considering that there is an application made on the same property for honeydew donuts.
This is saying adjacent properties are protected from nuisances caused by noise, fumes, glare of lights. Honeydew donuts is part of the site plan, the site plan is site plan review. The site plan is site plan review, this is a site plan review.
This is site plan review for Stone Pantry, has nothing to do with honeydew.
Then what is, then what is, then what is the, what's the site plan submitted for this for? What, what do they even bother submitting a site plan for? If it's not associated with the site plan, with the parking and the entrances?
It's a site plan application, they provided a site plan.
Exactly.
So...
So, what this is saying is...
This application provided a site plan to show the location of the use in the interior building. It showed where the parking spaces would be dedicated.
Right.
And there wasn't anything in there about lighting.
And what this is saying is we are approving the gla-, we are approving this project because it doesn't create any problems with lighting and glare. And there are lights that sit on top of the building that are down at one end of the project that are part of the site, part of the site plan, which by saying, we are saying, there's nothing wrong here...
So, we can, we can remove glare of lights and distracting visual features?
Correct.
Okay.
Significant natural features on site are preserved, it's non, non, non-applicable. In accordance with cor-, number four, in accordance with correspondence and testimony from the applicant and property owners during a public hearing held on September tenth, the planning board concurs pedestrian ways, access driveway, parking facilities, and method of solid waste disposals are provided on site are properly designed. I would delete, I would delete that. I don't think this was approving that. We were not approving that site plan, it had already been approved once before for parking, layout, so on and so forth. What it's saying here is we are approving it again. And why I, why I think that needs to be deleted is that, if you recall, I said I would've done it differently, and I didn't... And I didn't get into it back then.
Okay.
But I think the easiest way out of that is just to delete that.
Item four?
Yep, item four, just delete, "The planning board concurs pedestrian ways, driveways, parking facilities, and method of solid waste disposals are properly designed and will operate in a manner consistent." You can leave, "The planning board concurs method of solid waste disposal as provided on site is properly designed." But I don't want this board, at least not while I'm on it now, to say that what's out there is properly designed. Uh, communal impact of the site plan and the character of the town is minimal and any normal stormwater runoff generated by the site area progress being properly managed.
I, I would say that six is irrelevant as well, no? Cause there's no, there's no change to the overall footprint or anything.
I would agree.
Well, it, you know, this is, certain things are put in there to show that the board is, is approving something that later on, it, it's shown that it, it was known at the time and nothing is being changed, so later on, if it goes back, and while there's nothing addressed about stormwater.
Well, Howard, I mean, that could be said about virtually anything that we wanna strike. So, I mean, what's your main?
There was no.
What's the criteria for it?
There was no stormwater runoff presented, discussed, it had nothing to do with this application.
There was no stormwater discussed, and does the board not wanna make a statement that site improvements will not increase it?
I would say site improvements have not changed from the previously approved plan.
You can't say previously approved plan, cause there isn't one. So if you wanna remove stormwater.
There isn't a previously approved site plan?
This is a site plan for Stone Pantry. Well, it, because I'm, I'm a little concerned that the board is associating this with another site plan for a different project. So, and, and you don't need to say easy to me either. So if you wanna remove stormwater runoff, I'm fine with that. But don't say it was because it was in a previous site plan. Cause it wasn't.
All right, we have a real difference of agreement and we can talk about it later. I say it's number six should be struck.
Okay.
Board of Appeals, CBA has previously reviewed special permit applications, Board of Appeals has previously reviewed. Further, planning board hereby grants approval to the applicant subject to the following conditions. This would have been faster if we had done it the other way, but I appreciate your patience. Um, or it's authorized agent, subscriber station, the final site plan for approval issued on Mylar, planning board enters project sign, so. Prior to the start of and during construction, the approved site plan must comply with applicable state, fire and building codes the applicant. Be all erosion control measures or other conditions, under the order of conditions. There, there are no erosion control measures associated with this project that I'm aware of, so that B would get struck. Three paper copies of the signed site plan and other plans required by the planning board. Stockpiling materials, five A, in connection with the construction of the site as approved. I would get rid of that, there's no stockpiling of dirt, wood from the site. Construction.
Perhaps construction material for interior.
For the interior. Um, that's a good point. Um, in connection with the construction of the building as approved, well, it's not as the, of the interior as approved. Construction materials must be shown on a plan and reviewed and approved by the planning staff. Now, do you want that? Seems like a lot to do over nothing.
Agreed.
It does.
So you're removing item five completely?
Honestly, I'm wondering why we had a site plan.
Well, that's another whole discussion.
Cause it was a site plan, because it was a site plan application required because of change of use.
Let me, let me, let me just.
Wow.
Let's, let's, let's go through this. Construction, operation, utility and municipal services shall be installed underground as specified. Uh, that's a site note, so that probably would get, uh, deleted. Um, there are a couple others in there, but they're not a big deal either way, I guess. Provisions approval by the action of town board, department requires changes, any changes in the approved site plan. Special conditions. Okay, so those were the, those were, that's what needed to be struck. What's the board's pleasure? The board can, um, approve the plan contingent upon these coming back. Um, or you can wait and approve it at the next meeting, um, after you have a chance to review it.
I think we could approve it based on changes we made tonight.
Okay.
I agree because they're miniscule and the objective is to move your project forward and, to, to make sure that we're doing due diligence. I think we're doing due diligence.
Okay?
Me too.
So a motion?
Motion to approve with changes.
Okay.
Second.
So there's been a motion made by, uh, Tim, seconded by Tilly, to approve, um, Stone Pantry at one oh five East Main Street. Order of conditions, uh, with amendments as discussed. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Unanimous. Good luck.
Okay, thank you.
Hope the record show him back?
He is back.
Record show, I don't care.
Old kiss.
Have a paper clip.
Don't care.
Definitive subdivision plan. Turning leaf. Howard?
This is the final draft, all the comments, uh, have been adopted and approved. So what you see is that, with all the edits incorporated. And, uh, there's a note, uh, to the board that there's two slight changes being made since you received it, and that is on the cover. Says petition of is no longer Artisan Development LLC is Turning Leaf Georgetown LLC and.
Howard, I'm sorry, where I, I lost your.
I'm on the cover.
On the cover page?
Petition of. It says Artisan Development LLC, one eight nine North Main Street.
And I'm seeing referring to the above petition. Oh, okay.
That's, that's the change.
Okay.
Yeah, and then you'll find that on page eleven. The owner applicant is no longer Tom O'Connell manager, Artisan Development is Turning Leaf Georgetown LLC.
So we don't have a name of a person on here at all?
Well, um.
On page eleven we do.
We, we, you wanna leave Tom O'Connell manager? Yeah, so it's just gonna be the Artisan Development LLC is changed to Turning Leaf Georgetown LLC.
Well, she said you could leave a manager on that.
Yes.
He is shown on, on page eleven, where it says owner applicant, Tom O'Con- Mr. Tom O'Connell manager.
Right, that, that'll stay, but, uh, name is, name.
But this changes, yeah. Mr. Chairman, I, I have, um, a couple of things that I wanted to point out, if I may.
Yeah, let me, um, let me, just before, before we begin, um, on it, um, so just a reminder, the public hearing's closed.
Absolutely.
Uh, so there's no new information and, um, we can ask, uh, questions of, of, uh, the applicant, um, or the task force, to, uh, you know, almost statements of fact, like, so this is what was said, I think, yes, no, kind of thing, but no dialogue and I guess just to try to, cause it's such a slippery slope, real easy, real quick to go down there. After the question is asked, if the question, whoever it goes to, if you could direct it back to me, then that'll help us keep it from going down a slippery slope. Um, so with that.
Perhaps what we can do is focus exclusively on the decision as much as possible. And with that in mind, um, I'd call your attention to page eight. And we are, um, in bullet number seven, prior to lot eight being released. After release of lot seven, prior to release of lot eight, developer shall provide to the planning board documentation of a performance security in an amount to be determined by the developer and SIE with approval by the planning board. And shall be posted to ensure completion of the work in accordance with the approved subdivision plans. Um, that might lead one to believe that the number developed by the developer would be the final amount of the surety. But it doesn't take into account any multiplier factor that we would add.
Oh, all right, well, SIE being Site Inspecting Engineer.
Right. Dave Varga.
Ri- right.
But he may or not, may, it, it just, I, I think it should be clear that the surety amount has a multiplier to it.
Okay.
And I don't, I don't know where you wanna, where the board feels comfortable.
To compensate for inflation or something like that.
Sure. And if it worked, if it weren't for that and the two subdivisions that we, um, that we had to pull the bonds on, those subdivisions never would have gotten completed by the town. Because these things traditionally take years and years and inflation eats away at the amount of the bond. Or whatever the manner of security, tripartite, whatever it happens to be.
Do you have a, do you have a suggestion for?
Uh, I believe that's in our regulations, two, two point five percent, two point five X? And I, I'd feel comfortable just saying as per regulations.
In an amount as per the subdivision regulations?
Yeah, just if.
And removed to be determined?
Something to that effect, yeah. Just throw it in. Just so that we're clear on that.
It's a good pick.
Okay. Page ten. Uh, down at the bottom, in the paragraph that says expiration of approval, it's one, two, three, four. Uh, the sentence that begins, "If the construction has not within this timeframe."
I'm sorry, where are we, Harry? Page ten.
Page ten.
Number two.
Number two, expiration of approval.
Two A, okay.
Two A, um, one, two, three, fourth line down in that paragraph, a little bit, three quarters of the way over, uh, a sentence begins, "If the construction has not."
Commenced.
Ca- commenced, exactly, it should, the, the word commenced needs to be added in there. If the, if the construction has not commenced within this timeframe. Somehow we lost that. It's probably a word autocorrect or something.
Okay.
Right?
Yeah.
And, uh, and, and these are just picky little things, but this is something I saw when I was reading. And, uh, last but not least, I believe it's the next page, which is, um, documents considered in the decision. I believe number four, A, plans titled and dated. Uh, Oc- October tenth, two thousand thirteen revised through, and the final cut won't be July thirty first, bullet?
No.
Good catch, huh?
He, he submitted his drawings to Larry, those are the final, right?
We have them here as well.
Yeah.
I read paper in one Mylar. We were submitted to Larry and I think you.
Yeah, could I see those so we could get the date that they were revised to?
Of course.
No way, you have to unroll them. You're not gonna be able to cheat away in there. It'll never happen.
No, I'll chew your way down.
Nine sixteen.
Great.
Two thousand and fourteen, nine being September sixteen.
When did the public hearing close? Was that July twenty, June twenty fifth?
It was June twenty fifth.
June twenty fifth? I, I just wanted to make sure that we weren't missing anything in the, um, in the testimony. And, um, I believe, if I'm not mistaken, the last thing is, um, uh, what, what does it see here? Following planning board, provided information shall be deemed part of this decision. We just, I believe we need to update that, it says Larry's, um, H.L. Graham's Technical Reviews, and this is, this carries us through D five, but I believe we're up through D seven now?
Okay.
Right, so you need to add six and seven?
Yeah.
For that? I'm done.
Probably his last comment that says.
That was seven.
That was seven.
That was seven. Six was the one that pointed out three bullet points. I wasn't here for that meeting. That was six. And I believe we were emailed.
D seven, we've just received and that basically said.
We got an email, right?
Done, yeah.
Yeah, that was seven, I believe. I'm done.
Public hearing closed on June twenty fifth, that is three months ago.
Doesn't sound right.
Where, where, where does it, where does it say that?
The very.
I, I of B. Dates December eleventh, February twelfth, January twenty second, March twelfth, April twenty third, May twenty eighth, June eleventh, June twenty fifth. Yeah, it seems like there should be a July in there somewhere, right?
Or August.
Yeah, good point.
Two twenty.
It wasn't August.
Really?
It was July twenty third.
Okay, July twenty fifth.
It wasn't June twenty fifth.
It might be.
That, that's a, that's a question for clarification.
No, it might be.
Does the applicant?
I'm fairly confident it's twenty fifth.
Yeah, okay.
Twenty fifth of?
Probably was, yeah, yeah.
Of June?
Yeah, okay. Yeah, really. Thank God for those four major extensions.
Tilly, any questions?
Yeah, I, um, I have some questions that I wanted to ask the tra- the task force. And, and also the developer. And I'm trying to get yes or no, and we were told yes or no answers. I'll try a Matlock, I guess. I'm not a lawyer, but.
It, it's, it's, it's so you get clarification on what was presented in the public hearing.
Well, it's gonna, gonna be difficult, but I will see what I can do.
New information.
You imagine? Anyway, I just wanted to, um, to be confirmed that you are in fact still wanting to have the money for the affordable requirement in lieu of building on site.
Mr. Chairman, I think, believe she's referring to the bill of payments?
Yeah.
And that would be correct.
Yes. Okay, so there's no change. And the second question I have is, um, are you confident that by the next census, which is, um, twenty twenty, that you will have promoted increased affordable units in Georgetown to be placed on our list? That will be generated that census, after that census.
That wasn't discussed at all in the public hearing.
I think they.
Unfortunately.
We don't have to discuss it because that's in our bylaws for the affordable requirement. That it has to be concerned that you have to be on there. If you read the bylaws.
The, the task force didn't present anything to the planning board about their goals before the next census of achieving the housing requirements to be put on the standard, uh, housing index.
So this would constitute new information.
Well, I think the bylaw states, and I'll, I'll pull out the bylaw.
Well, even if the bylaw states though, Tilly, I, I think the fact that they've never made a presentation to, to, to that means that this discussion about that is new information. And, uh, I, I think, uh, that, that's my feeling, what, what, do, do you think it's new information or not? And I'm, I'm just thinking maybe this will help move this along.
I'm thinking maybe you should ask another question.
Okay, Bob, same, Tim?
I'm not clear on exactly what you're asking.
What I, what I am asking is that in order to associate our bylaw, which requires the, this development to have two units established.
That's one option.
Right. They, I wanna know if by. They, I want to know if by receiving the money, the task force or the trust gets the money, if the task force has plans that will promote an increase into the list, the inclusionary list that we have.
By what time? I mean, eventually.
By twenty, by 2020, which is the new list that we'll get. Right now, we have one that's on, we're, I believe we're on eleven something, eleven point something. And we were on thirteen, and then the next census came out in ten years, and we're down to eleven something. So the next census comes out from that one in ten years, which is 2020.
Well, I mean, there's no way to know if the subdivision goes belly up or something. I mean, they can't be positive, but assuming everything goes well, there's not a reason why they.
Well, I'm asking.
But I think, but, but the question that I would, the question that, that I was asking you was that, the subject matter aside, in terms of that we, that you understand exactly what it is she's talking about.
Yeah, I do.
The, the subject is new information that is being asked of the applicant, which the public hearing is closed, and we're not able to take that new information. It's a discussion that was not, we haven't had before, and this is new to have this now.
Mr. Chairman, I can try to answer the question without providing any new additional information if that's helpful.
Oh.
We, we have a mandate and we're, we're working diligently on our mandate.
That's public information.
Mr. Chairman, I have one more. And it's just, it's not new information. It's just that we'll get two houses, which is 10%. If we get in lieu of, we can leverage that money to build more houses. So the answer is, yes, if we get in lieu of payments, we would be able to probably come closer to ensuring that we meet our 2020 requirements.
Okay. So I, I, I think, I think we need to move on from that.
All right. And, and then also the developer, I would like to ask them similar, a similar question if they.
You, you want to come up?
Have, have you? Is your stand still the same as it was previously, that you want to build on site and not do the money?
So I believe what the question is, is what is our position? Our position is really never truly wavered. We will do whatever the board deems to be in the best interest of the community. However, we did at the most recent hearing say we are more than willing to withdraw the request if that's going to relieve the acrimony on the board. However, during the public hearing, the discussion was issued in, right at that June meeting, we had stated that we would consider payment in lieu of delivering the two on site, subject to certain conditions that we had discussed at that meeting. So there is no additional information. And I believe that Mr. Snyder probably can review what was said at that meeting.
So, so your, so your answer is that at, at a public hearing in the past, that was expressed, that you would consider in lieu of and?
Exactly.
Okay. Does that answer that?
Yes.
Okay, anything else?
No, I think that's it.
Okay.
Would you like to reconsider that decision?
I don't know that you can actually ask me that.
Yeah, it's kind of like, isn't that new information?
No, it's, it's, as I said, the, the discussion was, if I may, I'm not going to answer the question directly, but what I'm going to say is, the discussion at that hearing was that if this board asks for us to make a payment in lieu instead of the two lots, as was stated during the public hearing, we will consider that request. And that was on the record during the public hearing.
So basically, the answer to that question is, is around about yes?
So a second question might be, your decision to go with the two units on site was prompted by not wanting any further delays in this project? Or was it prompted by not wanting any further delays in the decision?
It was to relieve the board from the acrimony to just have.
And that was what, that was expressed.
And I, I did say that, yes, I did. And we did state what the terms would be of our payment in lieu at that public hearing too, which.
Public meeting, right?
Well, at the hearing, not just, so I apologize. When I'm referring to public hearing, I'm talking before you close. When I say public meeting, I would talk about what we did after you close. I always try to differentiate because I, I myself get confused.
I know, I get a little confused on that.
And, and your recollection of our discussion prior to closing the public hearing was in lieu, if you went the in lieu of payments, what were we, were, just refresh my memory, were we talking about going with 6% of?
May I? So, okay, so.
Just to repeat what was.
I'm only going to repeat what I said at the hearing?
Yeah.
So at that public hearing, what was said was that we, that the applicant was willing to actually, I'm going to go through the whole thing, to actually pay 6% of actual sales and not average, so that it would be, it actually is, and we had profited that as being a little bit better for the town, so it's not an average, it's actual of every sale. We said however, that the sale, we would request that the board, if we were to pay payment in lieu, was to consider a unit to be either a lot or a vacant piece of land that we were selling to someone who would build themselves. And we also said then however, we understood the board and the trust's desire, Howard, I think I'm all right with this, the board and the trust's desire to generate a certain level of income so that they could satisfy the intent.
The housing production plan goals of.
Yes, exactly. So what Mr. O'Connell had said during that hearing was, in order to do that, instead of trying to grab just the average of any kind of a lot sale price, he would agree to create minimums so that he would never sell less, I mean, pardon me, more than seven lots and would never sell them for less than $250. And should that occur, no matter what, he would still pay 6% of that value. That was what was stated at the public hearing. I believe that was on June 25th.
With, with that 6% being paid at the time of the, the transaction?
At the, at the time of every sale, so that in order for me to secure and obtain the, the general leases necessary, I had to deliver and demonstrate that I had money for the town on every HUD settlement statement, so closing, I show the money going to the town. And then, I'm sorry, I think it was the 11th lot and the 20, I can't remember if it was 11 and 20 or 11 and 22, to do fractional. I just can't remember what that was, which.
I recall that it was the 11.
I don't remember.
That's what I recall.
Twenty eighth or?
Twenty second?
It was 11 and 22nd, okay, I just couldn't.
I think so, but we can confirm.
I just can't remember.
Yeah, yeah.
So can I get that repeated with a yes or no answer?
I don't think you, I don't think there is a.
No.
I think it's so beyond that.
Yeah, no.
I just repeated what was stated at the public hearing.
You had a long, you had a long bit of it, but the key, key to those previous discussions was you wanted to pay on the lot and not if you, whoever develops it, the market price of that house.
Up to seven.
Has that changed?
You, I can't, I can't answer that because I can't change anything.
It was, it was clearly stated during the public hearing.
I'm not trying to be difficult.
No, 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 thank you.
That you could not ask, and, and I believe this was even written by town council, that you cannot ask for that 6% after they sell of whoever buys it.
That's not true at all. That's not the way I read it.
No, it's the exact opposite.
That's the opposite.
My interpretation of what.
Okay.
What the town council said was that he expected the 6% after it was sold.
He expected it, but it would require.
Do you have it?
May I, may I? Okay, no, no, one sec. So how, how did you finish?
I'm, I'm not going to speak right now.
So we, we were advised by our council that we couldn't set a limit of seven lots.
Tim, I want to be, I want to be really careful here.
This is what we discussed though, and, and that's not news to anybody, is it?
Okay, all right.
You, you received the email, the planning board received from their town council.
We're only discussing that email that was presented at the meeting?
Dated August the 19th.
Couldn't have been.
Or did that email come after the meeting?
Close, close.
Well, the email is dated.
The 19th of August.
Hearing closed in June.
And you had a copy of it?
I, I did, yes.
Yeah, but she can't answer any questions.
I can't answer questions relative to that, I'm sorry.
All right.
Not to, I can only answer questions relative to what was discussed at the public hearing.
Yeah.
But I can answer anything with that.
So the affordable, this, this is for the Affordable Housing Task Force guys again. Is that essentially what you were looking for? As what, what you approved was you were okay with the 6% of everything that's sold?
6%, but we were looking at a term of a housing unit, generally reflected a lot with a house on it. And it was only at a hearing that we were supposed to provide the formulas for you to actually create the costing, that the lots came up. So they were really 11th hour type thing, and then everything went up in the air at that point and never really came down again.
Okay.
So, so the answer is that you didn't specifically discuss that in your vote at your meeting? You didn't discuss?
Tim, I have what the task force presented to the planning board, and I'm sure the task force has it as well, the motion that they signed, if you want to review that.
I would. For one reason or another, I can't.
This was part of the public record?
Yeah.
So it's not new information?
Yeah.
I, I, I'm going to read it.
What's the date?
Yep, it says July 21, 2014.
July 21st?
21, 2014.
After the hearing.
The meeting closed June 25th.
In response to the request of the Georgetown Planning Board relative to our opinion of certain matters pertaining to indoor.
Do you have in your?
Of the inclusionary zoning bylaw.
Closed June 25th, the public hearing.
Recommends the following, as per the minutes of our meeting on June 19th, attached in this vote on July 21st, 2014. One, that the in lieu of payment option best meets the affordable housing needs of Georgetown. Two, that section G1 of the inclusionary zoning bylaw is the relevant part of the bylaw controlling in lieu of payments. Three, that the basis for the average selling price of a unit in line with the formula that is part of section G1 is the average sales price of a fully developed unit by the developer to an unassociated buyer. Undeveloped lots are not considered in the bylaw, and the proper context for a unit in the bylaw is a housing unit. Four, the number of affordable units as shown in the formula, section G1, is the total number of units approved by the planning board divided by 10. So.
Sorry.
Go ahead. Then they just give an example, 22 units approved with an average selling price of 500,000, 500, times 22 divided by 10, times point six. They don't give an answer what that one is, unfortunately, but.
That, that was submitted, I believe, by the task force for the clarification for the planning board.
Just so I see it?
No, thank you for reading that.
Okay. Well, okay. Bob, did you have any questions?
I had a question regarding conditions in inclusionary housing component. I'm reading this, that this is what we decided. Now, we're talking about stuff now that isn't what we decided. What we decided was this, right?
Pointing at her.
I'm, I'm pointing it.
We haven't voted on it?
Right.
So we haven't decided?
We haven't decided.
We haven't, we haven't decided.
No.
Okay.
We haven't voted on it.
All right.
But there was a, there was a consensus at that meeting, but it may have changed.
True.
So.
I think that consensus was, could have gone either way.
Okay, yep, and I can't vote. I have to remind.
My, my.
I would say there's at least two of us that.
Okay.
My question has to do with letters B and C. The first AHU shall be, this is on page four, shall, shall be constructed on or before time of sale of the 11th, et cetera.
What page is it on?
Page four. And, and this may be a stupid question, but my question is, does shall be constructed mean construction started or is construction completed?
Where are you?
B and C.
And C.
The, the words shall be constructed.
Shall be constructed.
The first AHU shall be constructed on or before.
The time of sale of the 11th.
Does that mean construction shall be started on or before or shall be completed?
Doesn't say started.
It doesn't say completed either.
That means constructed, completed.
Completed, okay.
I read that pretty clearly, it's completed, I would.
All right.
Did you want to get anything else, anything additional? Because I, I think it's coming back to the board now for, for us to.
It's not additional, and I just, just, I gave the, I, I gave the inclusionary housing bylaw, which is part of our zoning code, a, a good, long, slow read. And one of the, one of the things that jumped out at me is there's a, a section H in it. And I just like to read that. It's, it's section H, Regulation. Affordable housing production, housing contribution payment, and rental and resale restrictions required by this section shall be governed by regulations promulgated together by the permitting boards for purposes of carrying out their duties under this bylaw. Now, this was approved at town meeting, as amended in 2008. And here we are, six years later. We have never, ever created or promulgated any of the regulations that would have clarified all of the things that we're unclear on, what is a lot, is a lot a unit, when does it go out? We never did any of that. This has absolutely nothing to do with your development or the hearing or any of that, but.
Oh, I say it does.
I, I would say that a lot of the, a lot of the ambiguity and the things that we're dealing with, where we really seem to be doing this and we don't, or kind of poking in the dark at it, if we had created regulations to help us understand and to set the, the steps that need to be taken, clarify all of those definitions for what we need, what we're dealing with there, if we had developed those regulations, I don't think this would be such a difficult thing.
The reason it's happened, hasn't happened till now is because the, the real estate market tanked, and this is the first big subdivision where this was really challenged.
I completely agree with you. It's the first time we ever had to do it, but.
And it doesn't mean that we have to stick our hands on it.
I think, I think.
You understand what I'm saying?
I do.
And that's all I.
Well, I think what you're saying, I, I agree with, but it still is coming back to the board right now in terms of, on the decision, you know? The only way, you're either going to vote to approve it or, or that.
I agree with that.
Or not, and, but the only way we're going to be able to get into discussion in the way that I hear people still wanting to talk about it, I don't know any other mechanism other than to open a public hearing again. And, you know, I don't, so short of doing that, and I'm not suggesting that we do that, but short of having a public hearing opened again and whatnot, this is where we're at. It's time for the board to.
Mr. Chairman, I would like to make a motion to sign the decision, final draft, approval of definitive subdivision dated September 10th, with the corrections noted earlier this evening.
Mm-hmm.
That's, that's my motion. I'd like to make a motion that the board sign.
I've got other concerns and.
Well, can we get a second and then we'll get into some discussion?
Listen.
Okay, so motion's been made and it's been seconded to approve Turning Leaf Notice of Decision dated September 10th, 2014, with amendments as previously noted. Discussion?
Yeah, I, I feel, I, well, I'd like to first, these regulations, if I may, from Harry's comment about the regulations, I, I read that paragraph to mean that if someone needed. I, I read that paragraph to mean that if someone needs a special permit or a variance in any of this project, those are the regulations they're talking about. Like, we follow the subdivision regulations. That's what we have. And I believe that they're saying here that every board has their own regulations, and they have to follow them. And that's basic language in zoning. If some, if someone else's board has to give a, an approval for a permit of some kind, they have to follow theirs as we have to follow ours. And I think that's what that paragraph is related to.
Okay.
Okay.
Just, that's, that's Tilly's. Can you?
Okay, and the other, the questions that I had was, there was no vote, and I was surprised when I saw this here. When I made a few comments that I approved what you had said, I didn't mean that I was going to go that way. I just think that you had a good statement. You know, you have a, a good.
Point.
A good point, thank you. But, anyway, back to, to this. What I was concerned about this, and I have been, whether we pay, or they pay in lieu of building on site, or we proved the site, is that I was looking for surety for us to do whatever, for them to do whatever, and there's no surety here. Say, for instance, if he builds half of them, and then bellies up, something happens. We have no guarantee that we're gonna get a house, or whatever, payment, out of the first, what is it, eleven, fifteen?
Eleven.
Yeah, we're not gonna get even one.
We have eleven lots.
But however.
We have eleven lots. Oh, wait a minute.
That's okay, let's, let's not.
That's my point, is, let me finish. I'm looking for surety. And I'm like, maybe we could add it to what was surety on the other, but, you know, however you want to do it.
Question to you about that. Is that what was talked about when someone said it would be a town council issue to work that out?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. And we have nothing here to work.
And, and I recall a conversation that you could not create a bond or a surety for the construction of affordable housing units.
Yeah, but there's other ways to do surety. And he was going to, in that, in that memo, he implied that he was going to handle it. Now, I, the, the John Eichman, our K and P person.
If I may say, this all falls back to the regulations that should have been promulgated for this, that would have already anticipated this.
Well.
But this was the first test case. This was the first, this became a relevant issue.
Anyway, that's one of my concerns.
Okay.
Well, Tilly, I, I highly suggest that we get it addressed, instead of saying, it's one of my concerns. Cause when you say it's one of my concerns, I hear this going beyond tonight, and it can't. So, let's get it, and I'm just, I'm, I'm.
Right.
Let's get it done, let's address the concern.
I agree, I'd love to get it done.
So what, what is the statement in the email?
I would like to have surety in here, and maybe just phrase it, that with town council's approval, there will be established some surety, whatever he has in mind here. There has to be some surety to me, because I don't feel comfortable. We do surety for everything else, and we don't do it for this. And this is critical.
May I say that, if I may, Mr. Chairman?
Yeah, please.
If, if the applicant were to not build the lot, the, the affordable housing, we wouldn't release any surety. We have surety.
And, Tilly, if I can phrase your concern, maybe in a different way, I'm just saying it back, so I understand it. Your concern is that after the road is built to binder course, the developer builds ten lots, sells or builds ten lots, and then defaults. Your concern is that the town has an unbuilt definitive subdivision, roads are built, and only ten houses on it.
And the requirement is for ten houses would be for one. And, and we don't, we don't, we're not gonna have that one. He's gone after the tenth lot.
And do you think that if the developer defaulted on his construction, that there wouldn't be another entity that would come along and construct any additional homes on it?
But we don't have the language in here to say that.
With all due respect, Tilly, after the release of the seventh lot, and prior, before we release from covenant, the eighth lot,
Right.
we're going to get a surety in the form of a tripartite or a bond of some sort. The, the one we just talked about and changed the language of to ensure that we have that multiplier?
Right.
Okay? We have that. That's our surety.
That we're not gonna release the remaining lots?
Well, if.
And he's gone, what does he care?
If they were gone after the seventh lot,
Yeah.
or whatever, or the eleventh lot, then at that point, we would have the money to turn around and ensure that the roadway is finished.
The money from?
From the surety.
Two and a half times the value? Well, don't you think we should be saying that?
I, I, I thought we added that in.
You have that.
We do.
We did.
You have that, huh?
But, but we don't have any reference to surety to ensure that the affordable housing is, is built.
Right.
So the surety is, 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 can be phrased to consider construction of the road, but it's, it's my understanding that there couldn't be any surety created for the sole purpose of making sure that an affordable housing unit was built.
Well, I don't see that here. I don't see that in the bylaw. It's everywhere, it says surety.
I, I, I think you're talking about two different types of surety, and
Maybe.
Town council is talking about surety for the construction of an affordable housing unit.
Right, and that's what I want Tilly to read out from the email, the words that she's considering. Because she's the one that's, that's thinking of the surety.
Yeah, it's, it's saying, it is simply a development cost that the developer must account for. Getting the security right would be the issue. And then he's got in parentheses, a subdivision covenant or bond will not work. So, with the Harris way, I noticed you did mortgages. Is that what he's referring to? A mortgage? A credit letter, a bank letter? I have no idea what, what could we get?
Subordinated all the mortgages.
We did subordinate, the town became the primary mortgage holder.
So that.
Bank subordinated to the town.
So there you go, we could do something like that. And it worked?
That's an unusual.
And, and that was discussed during a public hearing, that, that
It was.
It could not be done for this project.
But who said that? Nobody, I don't recall anybody saying it couldn't be done.
Jill, do you recall this conversation being made during a public hearing process where we discussed mortgaging the different properties?
Yes.
For the benefit of the trust?
Yes.
Do you recall what your response was?
Yes. It was no, because my response was, you can't place a mortgage on a home that you need us to build, because we can't build it. It costs far more than we're able to give it to you for. The, the surety that we had indicated was the fact that there is a burden on that particular lot to create an affordable home. So any use of the property going forward is burdened by that via your permit. The issue is, in all zoning, that you are not entitled to contemplate the demise of a builder, that that is considered to be an unreasonable, unreliable position, that you cannot do it. That was discussed at the hearing. Cannot create a parade of horribles upon which to base your decision and provide protection.
Did you give us some examples to back up what you're saying? Cause I remember you saying that, it's true, but nobody else in our board.
I can give you, I, I think I gave you a number of examples of when actually providing affordables is not appropriate. I did not give you examples of mortgages, I did not, I did not. Because it's just, it's, it's a legal tenant, it's not, it's a legal tenant.
Well, I'm looking for it.
But they weren't given at the public hearing. I, 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 I gave you the legal argument.
I think, you know, so it's, it's quarter of nine.
Okay. That was.
The board has, has had a long time to be dealing with all of this, and, you know, let's take a few more minutes if necessary, but.
Would I be out of order, Mr. Chairman, asking to call the question?
Yeah, I, I just want to quickly state, if I can, Harry, before you called the question, the fact that the, there is an extension of time that the board and the applicant have agreed to, and that extension of time expires the end of September. This is the last public hearing, or the last public meeting that can be done regarding this definitive subdivision application without requesting an extension of time to be offered to the board of the applicant.
My other question was here, D, one D on page four. It says, the developer shall make a fractional HCP to the trust, and the amount is calculated in town zoning by law, one, six, five, seven, one, F.
Yep.
But it doesn't say when he's going to make that.
On or before the time of sale of the eleventh lot.
But it, he could hold that until the very end, not sell the eleventh. I mean, he could.
Yeah, he can't, he can't build anything past twelve.
He can't sell the twelfth before he sells the eleventh.
He's gonna sell the eleventh?
Yeah.
Is that how you're reading?
It's not eleven, it's.
It's the eleventh lot.
I thought we should have had more clarity as to, he can't get a building permit for the twelfth lot until this is done.
You, you know, Tilly, I, I, I think what's happened is, you're, you've been around for a long time. And we've been burned.
Going to go?
We, no, not at all, not at all. We as a town, as a planning board, we've been burned before. As a matter of fact, this developer knows when we were burned and got us out of it. We lost the affordable housing component at the Whispering Pine subdivision. That should have been two units. And because the, but the developer went bankrupt, and because the board waited so very, very long in the process to ensure that the affordable housing units were created, we lost them. It became more economically viable for the developer to just leave those two lots and walk away at that point. Whether that was done intentionally or unintentionally, I'm not even gonna speculate.
I think that subdivision commenced before we even had that bylaw.
Yes, yes, it did. It did.
So that was, never would have fallen into the agreement.
But it was part of the permit. It was part of the permit that.
But it wasn't a specific bylaw mandating it back then.
I think it was ten percent, it was a ten percent.
Just, Howard, just stepping back on a question, it's probably a stupid question. To these concerns that Tilly's raising, is there a way to approve this as is contingent upon town council reviewing the decision and?
If you wanted town council to review the decision, you should have done it by now.
All right.
Because that, I believe that you would approve a decision, town council would obviously modify. And then you're stuck with a modified decision you haven't reviewed.
The clock's running out.
Yeah, and with all due respect, Mr. Chairman, I, I wouldn't put my signature on something that hadn't, would, that would be changed.
I was taking a shot.
Yep.
Appreciate it.
Okay.
So.
That's, that, those are my concerns, and, and it may be not relevant if the board so chooses to, you know, seriously considering requiring the developer to make the payment, not just on the lots, but on a completely developed lot, and follow that process that we do have spelled out in our bylaw.
Can I just remind the board of what happened at the meeting with regard to that, two issues?
Yes.
Would that be okay? Okay, so at that meeting.
This was the pub, this was.
Yeah, at the public hearing, the reason why we closed, and, and I remember this particularly because I remember that Mr. Lookat Tilly and I had the conversation that this was a very black and white issue. Because the applicant, it was said that the applicant has the authority and the power under the bylaw to elect, to do onsite. If the applicant so chooses to request that the board determine if a payment in lieu is preferable, the applicant has the sole power to ask for payment in lieu, only the applicant. The applicant is only required, and the board can only require and force, if you will, the provision of onsite units. If the developer, which it did, says that we will contemplate a payment in lieu, then the board can contemplate it. At that specific hearing, the statement was made that the, the applicant will consider a payment in lieu under the following circumstances. I'm gonna go slowly, not for any reason other than I want to make sure everybody hears. One, six percent of actual sales of all lots and homes. With the caveat that if the applicant is not able to sell a completed home and sells a lot to a third party, that the sale will still remain at six percent. But the applicant is willing to say that we will continue, though, to pay you a certain amount, so that no matter what, there will never be more than, the payments, I believe, ended up being a hundred and fifty thousand dollars just on lot sales. We will never be under that amount, and that will be the max we ever have at a lot sale. Other than that, we will pay you based on an appraised value of a home. That was the, that was what was proffered at the hearing, that was what the hearing closed on. Accordingly, the board, with regard to what information it is entitled to contemplate regarding a payment in lieu, is limited to what we suggested for payment in lieu, because that was all that was offered at the public hearing. I apologize, but that is it. What this board had then directed us to do, and had asked Mr. Snyder to do, is to go back to the board and see if they thought that payment in lieu that was discussed by the board at a public, here, at the public hearing was satisfactory to the board. The board did return and say that, well, it did never contemplated lot sales. However, that was not what was contemplated during your public hearing. The only type of payment in lieu you are permitted to contemplate is that which I just outlined. A payment based on six percent of actual sales with a limitation of no more than a minimum of two fifty on seven. That is what was contemplated.
Can you?
I know, that's why.
Make that simpler for me to understand?
I will. The applicant will pay six percent on all sales. However, if the applicant sells more than seven lots, individual lots, it will agree to pay the average sales price on actual homes sold.
That have sold.
So, if I may, I'm gonna add an example, but for the point of clarity only, not for demonstrating anything. So if the average sale price ended up being six fifty, then i- if we were to sell an eighth lot, then that, then the value of the payment in lieu on that eighth lot would be six percent of two fifty, which is fifteen thousand, am I correct? I, I, I'm not good at math. Am I right? That would be, that would be the price paid. We would never pay six percent on two fifty, I mean, six percent on six fifty, which is thirty-eight thousand dollars. So, the eighth lot, I'm gonna just say it one more time, if the eighth sale ends up being a lot and no home, we will still pay to the town a price of thirty-nine thousand dollars, because the applicant during that public hearing said that there would be a limit on
The number of lots.
The value generated by the sale of only lots, in order to protect the town against any issues that could arise.
Right, just, just, just to be fair, I, I, I see you guys back there shaking your head. Is it that you don't agree that this was previously stated in the public hearing, or that you just don't agree with it?
Well, I don't, there's no, you have the special permit granting authority.
Yeah.
It's up to you how you choose what option is, is taken, what road is taken.
No, but my question is, why you, my, just, just my question.
For the record.
Just, my question is, I just want to be fair, and if you're shaking your head because you, you're thinking that this was not part of a public hearing, that they were getting into new information, and?
Well, we are getting, she, she just indicated that the last meeting, they offered one thing, and now they're offering something else, so you're getting into new information.
I don't believe, no, I think we did.
Well, that's what she just said, she said at that meeting that night, you should be limited to what they offered at that last meeting.
That's what she stated.
And that's what I just said.
Right, and then now she's offering you another deal.
No, I'm not, identical.
Well, you are, you are, it's a view.
Let, okay, let's not, let's not get into that.
They are changing the deal.
No, not.
No, no, they, they, I, I've not heard them change the deal.
They're offering you a, the value, to pay the value of a developed lot on anything over seven, on, undeveloped lots.
That's right, that's new.
And that's what, that's what we discussed that night.
That's new, never.
Okay.
Oh, that's exactly what we discussed that night.
No, she didn't, no, I, I don't agree with.
I believe that.
Okay, so.
No, he's right, he's right.
I had to discuss.
Well, regardless, if I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, we, we need to, it's now five of.
I just wanted to make sure that we knew exactly what, you know, what.
I don't, I don't, Mr. Chairman, I don't, I don't read the bylaw and I don't interpret Mr. Eichmann's memo saying that we can take payments for lots. It's just not there. Therefore, and it, what else is in there is that the developer has the option. That's not in the bylaw either.
It is.
Yes, it is.
Where? Identify it.
Okay, let's, I, I don't, we're, we're, no, no more going back and forth like this.
I'm not gonna go back and forth.
I just want Tilly to finish, so finish what you're saying.
Yeah.
And then we're all gonna just.
I, I want to, I want to support, um, the issue that I have is the surety. And the other issue is that I want to, to support getting the payments, but getting them for a developed lot, not a single lot. And I want it based on the provision that's stated here in this bylaw.
So just to clarify, so just to, so just to.
Well, that's the way I feel.
So just, just to, just to clarify, doesn't, doesn't the decision talk about the lot in the house together?
No, it doesn't, it mentions.
The, the, the decision doesn't state anything about receiving a payment for an undeveloped lot.
That's right, that's right.
No, I, right, it just talks about receiving two.
The fractional payment, the fractional payments.
The fractional.
And when the affordable housing units need to be built, the, the milestones.
And, and.
That did say milestones.
Yeah.
Nobody wants the affordable houses.
And, and the thing too is under D here, under one, it shouldn't be subdivision lot or lot with a dwelling unit, even on the fractional. It should be N when a developing unit is constructed.
So on or before time of sale of the eleventh turning leaf definitive subdivision.
Or lot.
Lot with a dwelling, lot with a dwelling unit constructed therein.
And. Right.
Empty or, or built.
Thank you for the correction.
Okay.
All right. Want to move the question?
Um, I, I, I will after I just make a statement. There's so much confusion. There doesn't need to be confusion. What there needs to be is some, a regulatory hearing so that we come up with the regulations. So that all of this stuff is laid out very, very clearly so that the affordable housing task force can have their input in that, so that we can clarify this, so that this doesn't happen again.
Yeah, well, if we vote to, if we approve this decision as it is, the affordable housing task force isn't getting what they want, which means the town is not getting what they want since they're tasked with pointing the, guiding the way for.
That's one way of looking at it, that's one way of looking at it.
I, I can't help it, I'm, I'm not gonna repeat stupid again, but I.
You're repeating stupid again.
But I, but I can't vote for it, there's no way I can get behind this decision.
I can, I'm there.
I, I just can't.
See what happens. I'll call the question and, uh, it will fall where it lies.
All right, so, um, the question, the motion has been called, time, discussion's over. All in favor of approving the notice of decision, final draft.
As written and revised.
But turning leaf subdivision dated September tenth, two thousand fourteen, as revised.
May, may I just ask, if we, I just wanna know, if we vote this down.
Yeah.
Then what?
Then the time runs out and they can do anything they want, I think you get constructive approval personally.
If, if, if the board does not take action tonight, then constructive approval. The board votes it down, the board votes down the, the subdivision and the applicant will most likely appeal.
Well, technically, we did approve the subdivision. We just failed to act in time. Because we did not render a decision.
So not rendering a decision implies approval?
They, they get a gimme.
Well, I, I really feel.
They go to work in twenty days, blah, 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 that's, it's all.
The, the discussion's all over, but I appreciate it, I appreciate it.
Okay, I, I.
The, the final draft, notice of decision for final draft should be dated to, uh, on the cover sheet, it says September tenth. It should be today's date, September twenty-fourth. There's also what is stated on the, uh, the signature page for the planning board on the back.
Okay, so, um, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
Uh, two, two, doesn't pass, is that correct?
Motion fails.
Motion fails. Okay, uh. Howard, what's, uh, what's, uh?
Annual report for Georgetown Planning Board?
Wish they could have voted.
Next on the agenda is the planning office, the Georgetown Planning Board, uh, annual report. This was brought up at the last meeting. Few corrections were done regarding the A and R, and if there's any other changes to be made, uh, I need to know them 'cause they do enter the selectman's office, uh, on the thirtieth. This annual report is a format that the board is familiar with, it's the annual report done every year describing what the board has done and what the board is planning to do in this fiscal year.
Didn't you do this at the last year, at the last meeting?
Uh, we did, but it was requested that, um, because you weren't in attendance, that if you had any, if, if you had any comments, that you could present them at tonight's meeting.
Did you check on that one that had four, was that Bussings' property? Remember you were gonna look into.
Those were four lots being combined. And, and what I did, Tilly, was that, um, if, if you look under A and R, um, what I added to the number of lots, previously it just stayed the number two for Swan Way, I put in parentheses land transfer. And then, uh, under West Main Street, which was Bussings' property.
Yeah.
I wrote four lots into one lot, combined lots. So that clarified what the four was.
Okay.
The only thing I would, um, I would call out, uh, under active projects.
Okay.
Harmony Lane, wasn't Harmony Lane accepted by the town the last time either?
Yes, it was.
So is, is that something that we put instead of site inspection?
Oh, what are you saying, active projects, it's, it's mentioned, um, the planning board maintained oversight on the following active subdivision developments in fiscal year, that should read fiscal year fourteen, which was the last year. So we completed site inspection and everything last year, it's just to give an update of what occurred.
So that's for all of those three?
Okay.
Yeah, Harris Way and, and Stone Row, because you still did some site inspection for Stone Row.
Stone Row isn't completed?
No, you haven't signed, signed off on that.
They were asked to, have it completed? That's private anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah. It, it, would it, would it be worthwhile to point out that the action that was taken was, um, uh, for, for Harmony Lane?
Yeah, uh, sure, understanding it's an action, you can just, uh, state, uh, acceptance.
A town meeting or something?
Uh, a town meeting.
Sure.
And, uh, under Stone Row, I think, um, Dave Varga has yet to do his final sign off on the, on the meets and bounds and the monuments.
Oh, God, that could be, that could be interesting.
And now you have turning leaf denied.
No, that, you, that, that's in this fiscal year, it wasn't last fiscal year.
Oh, I see.
A lot of denial.
Subdivision applications.
Okay.
Um, turning leaf is, is up under that.
Yeah.
Because they were submitted in fiscal year fourteen.
Yeah, I'm glad you wrote the, the date on East Main Street because it, shit, Mr. Demento keeps saying, three years the planning board took. I heard, I watched the Concom meeting, and he just expounds on that, like, we're bad boys, taking three years. And, you know.
Well, it is a park.
Yeah, but it's not three years.
Park, well, September twelfth. September two thousand twelve.
Did you have anything else to this?
Um, I'm not seeing anything else there. The world's gonna fall apart.
We were requested to come to the selectman's meeting.
Do we need to vote on the annual report?
No.
Okay. The second item, planning board meetings, conflicting dates.
Uh, the planning board's schedule in November is eleven twenty-six, which is.
I won't be able to make that meeting.
So I'm down in a quorum, will not be held. And then in December.
I won't be able to make that meeting.
What is the date on the December one?
Uh, the twenty-fourth.
Twenty-fourth.
Ho, ho, ho. I'm a little busy.
Yeah.
I might be busy.
So, uh, the planning board should.
Problem with my stockings.
The planning board should recognize that they will not be meeting those two nights. Uh, currently, I think the workload can be handled in one meeting in November and December, but, um, we'll see.
I have, um, something to think about, um, the affordable housing bylaw.
Regulations?
Yeah.
Probably a good idea.
Do we wanna schedule one meeting in one of those two months for the, we're gonna miss two, so instead of having just one meeting in November, one meeting in December, schedule a meeting so that we have one meeting to talk about just that stuff.
Well, if there's a priority set, okay. I, I really would like the storm drain numbers bylaw to be corrected. I mean, let's, we put that on a priority list.
Well, the, the, okay, so this is, maybe this is the point for having this meeting to finalize a vote on it, if it's moving.
Well, we'd have to, um, make note of that, that regular, the regulatory hearing.
Yeah, 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 for sure.
Right now, we got a regulatory meeting coming up next.
For a special town meeting.
A special town, for town meeting.
The next meeting.
But I'm thinking this meeting would be for just the board to sit down, discuss this and agree amongst ourselves, which ones were, which ones we're gonna be tacking first and, and take it as far as we can in, in a meeting, just to.
The, um, the planning board's gonna do stormwater, um, they're, if they're gonna do.
Solar.
Uh, solar and also try to do the inclusionary housing balance bylaw. Uh, that's kind of a perfect one. So, uh, I would state that you can take up one of the meetings, a special meeting, but you can start up those meetings in, in January, and I believe you need to have all of them completed by, um, the beginning of April, so you have three months, and, um.
So you recommend hold those off till January?
No, no, I'm not recommending holding them off, I'm, I'm saying if you're gonna handle those three, then you need to start doing meetings now.
Okay.
And as Harry alluded to, um, we need to make a public hearing notice, open a public hearing on reviewing them.
Right.
So if, if you're gonna carry those three for annual town meeting, then you will need to create a second meeting in, in, in one, if not both of those months.
Okay, well, do, do we wanna, let, I, let, put it out to the board, I mean, I, I'd like to create, speak just myself, a second meeting in November, and we'll cross December when we get to it, but to.
I actually have a procedural question. If regulations are to be, and we're disagreeing on the, the interpretation of that. I, I see that as giving the planning board the authority to promulgate regulations, you don't sort of see it that way.
No.
If in fact it is determined that the planning board does have the ability to promulgate regulations under that bylaw, do, are we in fact required to go to town meeting to have those regulations approved?
Eventually.
Well, usually.
Interesting, not, not, um, regulations in terms of subdivision regulations.
Not subdivision, but.
But if you promulgate regulations, those are the will of the board.
Mm-hmm.
If you make changes to the bylaw, then that's, it needs to be accepted by the citizens.
Well, that's what I was meaning and I.
And I'm not suggesting that we make changes to the bylaw, there doesn't seem to be a problem per se with the bylaw.
No, I don't.
The issue is that some of the things in the bylaw need, need a clarification that, in my opinion, regulations were made for. That is why you have regulations, to clarify and.
Well, can this, so can this be part of the agenda for, for this extra meeting in, in November? Just this kind of discussion?
If I set up, um, a special meeting in November, it should be, uh, a public hearing. And it, the board should decide now what they're, what they're gonna undertake first. Are you gonna undertake solar, which was nearly completed? Are you gonna undertake, uh, established by law of inclusionary housing? Or the stormwater, and I believe stormwater is just a matter, correct me if I'm wrong, Tilly, I'm really just wanting to include the, the Cornell numbers. And, and I just wanna state that the Cornell numbers, uh, are about fifty-fifty, with some people want them and some people don't. So there's gonna be discussion on about adopting the Cornell, uh, numbers, but I believe that's the crux of the revision, so that being said, it's the belief of the town planner that your longest, most intense effort on revising those, one of those three will be the inclusionary housing, and that's what you should start first.
I, I think because it's fresh in everybody's mind, is now the time to do it.
I would think that because the solar was so close, that that would be one of the things that we should first get rid of and get that out of the way.
Okay.
With respect to, um, the stormwater, I would submit that it'll be relatively easy, but really needs to be done in coordination with Concom regulations, or you're going to have, um, some.
Possible conflict.
Possible conflicts with, um, with decisions issued by two boards.
I agree with you too, because not only does Concom go by state regs, but they have some local regulations too, which are, are unique.
And the ideal situation would be for them to open their public hearing, for, to modify their regulations to adopt, and us to do the same pretty much at the same time, so those both complete at the same time.
And they meet once a month.
They meet once a month, that could be a longer journey for this board. And a journey that has absolutely nothing to do with town meeting. Shouldn't be town meeting, um, shouldn't be driven by when a town meeting is. My point being, sir, my point being that these are hearings. We can advertise all three of them, you can begin them, you focus your continuations when you need them. Because these things can run for a great deal of time.
Yeah, you might be feedback on the Concom and it takes them one month because it's one meeting a month.
Because it might take a little bit longer. If this board had a continuation for seven-thirty tonight, we could open the continuation, vote to continue until the next month, the next meeting, et cetera, et cetera. My point being succinctly, open them all, notice them all, and worry about getting them done as they come up.
October tenth, I can have wording for the public hearing notice.
That, that.
Okay, that sounds good.
That's, that's what my thinking, yeah, no, I, I'm on your board with that.
Get it moving.
Yeah, start it, start it.
Mr. Howard?
Take the engine over.
Sure.
Sure. Sure.
Crank the engine.
So, that gives us some direction on that. That's good. Um, I think that's it.
Motion to adjourn.
So, I, I have a question. You, with our vote being hung essentially.
It was denied.
Right, so what is that, when you talk construed approval or whatever, what does that mean?
I think you just lost your affordable housing, potentially.
Development hasn't been approved. And you're going to be hearing from the attorney.
Mm-hmm. They get a constructive approval.
Of what? Whatever they want?
Whatever the judge says.
It's, it's, it's.
Whatever the judge says would be the best time, whatever, if in fact that happens.
We don't have anything to do with that, remember?
If in fact that happens, the judge will, judge will do a finding and he will.
That meeting was closed, guys.
Yeah, but this is, this is general. If you're going to, uh, clarify our bylaw, which I don't think there's that many things to change, but if in fact you know that a court case is going to happen, the judge will give you some more inclinations of what you can put in this bylaw when you amend it. So it might be a good thing to, to wait and see, you know. The appeal process is twenty days, like, everything else? Yes?
You gotta wait twenty-one days.
I don't know. What is an appeal in a, in a subdivision timeframe?
Uh, Tilly, I'm, I'm, my head is, I'm sorry, I'm off.
We'll find that out, will you?
That was part of my question before we go.
Well, and, and I thought it was a clear answer.
Yeah.
Before we adjourn, since this is board business and since we're not locked into any hearing at this time.
Yeah.
May I make a motion again, Mr. Chairman, if you will hear it, to approve the notice of decision, final draft, approval of a definitive subdivision, dated September tenth, changed to September twenty-fourth for turning leaf subdivision. I'll make the motion again.
I'll second it.
What?
Alright, so there's been a motion made, uh, by Harry and it's been seconded by Tim to approve the, um, decision.
To reconsider our decision and.
Was that what, how you said that, reconsider?
Um, I voted in, yes, I lost. Yes, I lost, so, yeah, I can reconsider it, but I'm just going to make it again. This isn't any special town meeting.
So, so it was, so it was to.
This is Rob Hoover's meeting.
This is, uh.
You make, look, you're the chairman. You hear the motion, you, you get a second, you call it, it's done.
Well, well.
Didn't close anything. We were not at a hearing. We were in a meeting. We, just as we are now, in a meeting.
No.
Please don't be confused.
Time out, time out, time out. We will have discussion on this. Um, so, Harry has made a motion, uh, Tim has seconded it to, um, to, reconsider, um, to approve the notice of decision, final draft, definitive subdivision plan, dated September twenty-fourth.
Yes.
Uh, two thousand and fourteen, as, um, as, as amended, uh.
At tonight's public hearing, uh, public meeting?
At tonight's public meeting. Uh, so, um, discussion. My first question is, and I don't know if you know the answer to this, Howard, can we do this?
Why could you not?
I, I, I don't know. I, I don't know.
I was just about to ask the same question.
Well, I, I don't want to get into more trouble than we just did, so, um, but, but, but that, this is still a discussion, so I.
Absolutely. And if we can discuss it, let, let us think about the process.
Okay, well, let, I, let, let.
Okay. Uh, thi- this is honestly new territory for, for, for me in terms of
Okay.
what has happened with this decision.
Mary Ellen, do you?
So, um, maybe Mary Ellen, with her experience on a, on another planning board, can state, um.
Welcome to. Welcome to the Brian Man, Mary Ellen.
But that being said, I believe that the logic being presented by, um, a member of the board in reconsidering um, the, the decision, um, is, is a valid one.
It's definitely a valid one. I have no question about that. I'm comfortable with that. Whether it's, whether we can do it or not, I don't know, but it's, it's, it's a great, it's a great idea. It's a great idea.
Can we?
I don't think it's a question of ethics at all.
I don't think it's a question of ethics at all.
Because everyone is gone.
So what?
Well, so what?
If we're going to do this, you should have done it when they were there.
It wasn't a public hearing.
It's, it's just not.
It's not a public hearing.
This is.
Well, I have to say, I only voted against it because I thought Tilly was going to vote for it. I didn't.
Oh, my God.
That's not a good.
Oh, God.
Did you use the word stupid before?
Yeah, that was pretty stupid.
Thank you.
Whenever I vote, you're going to go, no?
Can I?
No, no, I, I just figured you were going to go along with it. I didn't want to end up with construed them or whatever it is.
Let's, let's come back to, let's.
As, as much as I think.
Why, why do you think?
The decision stinks. It doesn't stink as much as.
Why do you think we can do this?
The reason I believe and I know that we can do this is that we had a public hearing. That public hearing was closed.
Correct.
At the end of that public hearing, anytime after that public hearing, we are only in public meeting.
Correct.
At any point, under any point of business, we can bring up and decide. And we, what we did was, we already approved this subdivision.
Correct.
Okay? All we are doing right now is authorizing this eleven, twelve-page piece of paper. Remember something here. And on a different board, we wouldn't have even really had that much input into this.
Before, okay, before.
The planner would have drawn it all out, finished it up, handed it to us, and we'd just be signing it as a ministerial act.
Before you go, before you go any further.
Go ahead.
Um, I, I'm, I'm, I'm asking questions that are, not trying to shoot holes in it, but I'm just trying to, they're conservative questions. I, I want to see this work happen.
Blow the holes in it.
I want to see this work.
They're on it.
Um.
Well, they're on it.
We got, I was on a committee where, because it was not on the agenda, even though it was written, you may recall. And I'm wondering, with this, this was on the agenda under A and R, and then we went down to members, old business and planning office. Um, I don't, I don't see where this subject fits into any of those three categories.
Any other concern of the planning board?
Subdivision plan, turning leaf, final decision.
Yeah, but we, we were in planning office. We were in Georgetown Planning Board.
You can go back and revisit.
Oh, my God, we, we can't revisit? We can't reorder?
Okay.
Um, with all due respect.
Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman, with all due respect, and now you have it.
After, the only time we can't is after September thirtieth or whenever.
Anytime you want to move this around and change it, you don't even need this board's permission to do it. You are the chair.
May, may I make a suggestion?
We just don't have another meeting, so it's now or never.
Can, perhaps, um, if we want to vote again on this and reconsider our decision, perhaps we can then ask for legal counsel on whether that's okay?
We don't have time. We can't call them.
Well, we'd have to do it tonight and then see where the cards are.
Well, let me, let me ask this question.
Well, we want to do it until the thirtieth, because we've already come to the no decision decision.
And you have to call.
It's worst case.
Another meeting.
You have to ask before the thirtieth. It doesn't.
If, what, under what circumstances?
If, if, if the board's going to vote again, you have, in a quorum.
If we vote tonight and we vote for it, can we, after the fact, ask for legal counsel on whether that's acceptable? Did we do the right thing? And if he says no, then it's a tie and it's, it's no good. If he says, yeah, you can do that, then it's what, it's two to two, which was the, the result of the initial vote.
Right.
Which is a no. And if votes change, and he says, yeah, that's okay, then the votes change and we move forward.
This is how.
I, 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 this is only.
Didn't the school committee vote to bring the planning board in, to, in on the decision and then change their vote again later and change it?
Are you talking about the building?
Let me put it this way. I, I was on a committee once before, which sounds vaguely familiar, what you're talking about.
I mean, it was voted on and then voted out at a separate meeting, even. It wasn't even the same night.
It was another meeting because it wasn't, whatever.
Mr. Chairman.
And that passed muster.
I'm going to ask, I, I'm going to respectfully request, I'm not going to demand or call the question. I'm going to respectfully ask that you call the question.
Yeah, no, I, um, I, uh, question has been called and, um, I think it's great to take a stab at this one. So, um, we can give another vote. And, uh, all in, everybody ready?
Ready.
So, all in, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Sticks.
I'll abstain. I'm not voting, I'm not. I don't, I think that's.
Okay, good enough.
I would, I want to say why I'm abstaining.
Well, no, we're, we're, okay, go ahead, say why you're abstaining.
I think that this is morally wrong.
Morally wrong.
I myself feel that it's like, it's circumventing when people are present. You're like, not voting in front of them.
They couldn't provide any new information. They were clamped. They couldn't provide any information. There was no input from them allowed.
I hear, I hear what you think.
If it.
And we're going to find out from town council if what we've done is legal.
And that's, that's really what I was suggesting.
Yeah, no, I, I think that's a, I think that's a great idea.
They should vote again, so we have two out of three.
I think the vote was three in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and two abstention.
One of the affirmatives was, no, it's clenched.
That is correct.
Rob abstained.
I abstained.
Two abstained and those, those three.
Three affirmative votes, motion carries.
Motion carries. I just want to say, I think that the board.
Signature page, please.
I think what the board is trying to do here is the right thing. Whether we have the authority to do it or not, we're going to find out. And I can, I'm comfortable with that.
Sleep comfortably tonight, Rob.
Absolutely.
Sleep comfortably.
Harry, if it turns out to be legal, um, good job.
It's legit.
Good job.
It's legit.
Yeah.
That's true. At the end of the night, it's whether we all sign it or not.
Absolutely. You know what this is?
The planning board's signatures to the signature page.
This is a ministerial act. That is a ministerial act. We did not even have to vote. That could have been passed around.
Can I draw a little picture?
No, it wasn't, because that was not a vote.
That could have been passed around, Tilly.
We never voted, even though it says that.
We voted to approve the subdivision.
You didn't vote last week, or last meeting, I'm saying. We never, nobody voted anything. I was shocked when I read that.
We have three signatures. They're on there. That's done. Uh, do I hear a motion?
I move, we adjourn.
Second.
Motion to adjourn, seconded. On favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody. Tough meeting, good job.
Good job.
Myler's, thanks.
Oh, Myler.